I'm so glad you could join us. Thanks.
Hi.
This is my daughter.
Yes, I knew it because you look exactly like her.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, I look like a mirror. I come from a nice place.
This is the leading one.
And I used to work with, I think I'm right, that street?
That's the guy.
I used to work in that apartment.
He's in New York.
Yep. He was a morning tech, I was a night tech.
Yeah. Okay, Steve.
Look at him.
Look at him. That's the whole. Lily is looking. I think. Okay. We can put it there. The other one is nothing, the other one looks like it's not here. We'll have to fix that later and then we can go.
Okay.
We're getting some experience for the past year.
Oh yeah, I forgot about that, dude, I disturbed. Do we have five? We got five, six, seven.
Good afternoon. We are ready to begin the meeting. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System will now come to order on September 22nd, 2021 at...
4:04 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed in the duly posted meeting notice. We take this opportunity to welcome back everyone to our first in-person regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the first meeting since 2020. We have been meeting remotely since March 2020 due to COVID-19 pandemic. The suspension of the Open Meeting Act was lifted effective September 1st, 2021, and full compliance with all provisions of the Open Meeting Act resumed requiring at least a quorum of the board to meet in the physical location of the meeting. We would like to note for the record that Dr. Cynthia Letten Gary is scheduled to participate via video...
Hi.
This happened to be with eighty-two.
Yes, that's my daughter.
Yes, I knew it because you look exactly like her.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, I look like a mirror. I come from a good and honest place.
This is the leading one. Yes, this is my daughter.
And I used to work with, I think I'm right. That's right? I started working on my own. Yep. He was the morning tech, I was the night tech.
Yeah. Okay, Steve.
Uh-huh.
Look where he is. Look where he is.
The head. That's the hole. Yellow is the exit. Right thing.
I'm sure.
You don't know it. Or something.
Or something.
Okay. You're looking through. We can put it there. The other one is a thing. Have we just? I don't know. Yeah. One is nothing, the other one is looks like it's not here. We'll have to fix that later. Okay. We can. We're getting.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, dude. I disturbed. Do we have five? We got five, six, seven.
Good afternoon. We are ready to begin the meeting. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System will now come to order on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one at?
Four oh four P M.
This meeting was called for the purposes as listed in the duly posted meeting notice. We take this opportunity to welcome back, uh, everyone to our first in-person regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the first meeting since two thousand and twenty. We have been meeting remotely since March two thousand and twenty due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. The suspension of the Open Meeting Act was lifted effective September first, two thousand and twenty-one, and full compliance with all provisions of the Open Meeting Act resumed requiring at least a quorum of the board to meet in the physical location of the meeting. We would like to note for the record that Dr. Cynthia Letten Gary is scheduled to participate via video conference in accordance with Section five fifty-one point one-two-seven of the Open Meetings Act. We want to continue to remember in our thoughts and prayers all those who have lost loved ones during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Particularly, we would like to remember the aunt and uncle of trustee Reichart, Jose and Rita de La Garza of Kingsville, Texas, who passed recently. Also, we offer condolences to the family of Dakota Stormer, who passed on September third, two thousand and twenty-one. Dakota ran for the H C C trustee position in District One in two thousand and nineteen. Services for Dakota were held on September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, please join Dr. Cynthia Letten Gary as she leads in prayer followed by the pledges.
You all, my dear guests, here in prayer. Father, Father, we come to pray as we retire from the prison in your support at the end of the year. Tell us in a age of meaningful justice and a Bible of hope and mercy. Your love is great and it makes citizens that are not able to do this, yes, and now to be able to do it. And it seems to remind that all who live.
Give it. I should just do the flag of the States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one and the state, under God. Okay, thank you, Dr. Letten Gary. We are now ready to approve the minutes from Academic and Student Affairs Audit Board Governance Committee of the whole, External Relations, Marketing and Special Meetings on August fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, Special Meeting Board Retreat on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Regular and Special Meetings on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Special Meeting on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for August two thousand and twenty-one?
Go move, go on, Jones.
Second, Laredo.
Okay, we have motion and second. Any corrections to the minutes? Dick? Hearing none, let's proceed to a vote on the approval of the minutes.
Received.
Yes, was here.
Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. We'll now move to our awards and presentations and recognitions. Let's see, is Todd Duplantis here? Oh, here he is, okay. We are pleased to recognize donor BP America, who's made a new gift of seventy-five thousand dollars to H C C's Northeast College to support STEM education. We are grateful to BP America for their long-standing investment in students' education communities, including Houston Community College. At this time, it's my pleasure to invite BP America representative, Associate General Counsel Mark Crawford to come forward for the presentation. I would also like to invite Dr. Monique Humphrey, President of Northeast College, Dr. Mehmet Argin, Dean of Global Technology for Northeast College, and Karen Schmidt, H C C Foundation President, to come forward. Todd, the microphone is yours.
All right, thank you, trustees and chancellor. You may now return to your seats on the dais. And at this time, we invite Karen Schmidt, Dr. Monique Humphrey, and Mark Crawford to the podium for some brief remarks once they, uh, once you're seated.
Thank you, Chancellor Maldonado, Board of Trustees, Chair Hanson and trustees. I'm honored to have the opportunity, as the president of the H C C Foundation, to recognize and thank BP America for its continuous support of Houston Community College. BP America has made an additional investment of seventy-five thousand dollars to Northeast College. We are grateful to BP America for their community leadership, vision, and commitment in helping students achieve their educational aspirations and goals. BP America, on behalf of the H C C Foundation and H C C, we are appreciative of your gift to support our students. Your philanthropic dedication is an inspiration to us all, and we look forward to continuing this partnership in the years to come. I have now the honor to turn it over to Dr. Monique Humphrey, President of H C C Northeast College, who will share more with you about BP America. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm deeply grateful for BP America's support of Houston Community College and honored to have the opportunity to thank them. Today, we recognize their investment in H C C that will continue to help advance our students. As a global leader in energy, BP supports education and is committed to STEM and digital resources. For more than six decades, BP has supported STEM education programs in several institutions nationwide, including H C C. They understand that education is truly the epicenter if students are to access rewarding, in-demand, and sustainable careers. They also support initiatives that strengthen the communities where its employees live and work. BP's commitment to America goes beyond providing the energy and jobs that fuel economic prosperity. Their purpose is to reimagine energy for people and our planet. Their ambition is to become a net-zero company by two thousand and fifty or sooner and help the world get to net zero. BP has been America's largest energy investor since two thousand and five, investing more than a hundred and twenty-five billion in the economy and supporting more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand additional jobs through its business activities. On behalf of the H C C Foundation and H C C, we appreciate your contributions to support our STEM education programs and our students. Your commitment is an inspiration to us all, and we are grateful for your partnership. I want to thank Mark Crawford and everyone at BP America for their generous philanthropic investment in H C C that will continue to allow us to make a difference in the community that we serve. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce you to Mark Crawford with BP America and invite him to say a few words.
So I'd like to say first thanks to Monique and her staff over at, uh, the Northeast Campus. It's been a pleasure to work with them. They've been extremely patient and very much appreciated. So for those, uh, just a bit of background, I'm Mark Crawford, uh, and they introduced me as Associate General Counsel. I'm actually now Global Head of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at BP. Very excited about that role. So I'm here in that capacity, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity just to join in with you today. It's been great to be able to partner with Houston Community College. In fact, H C C's vision to equitably deliver relevant, high-quality education and training for students, the community, the economy, and beyond, goes hand-in-hand with what we're aiming to do at BP, and that is greater equity, inclusion, and adversity for our workforce, our customers, and our suppliers. So it feels like a natural fit for us to work together. At BP, we want our workforce and our customers to experience greater equity. That's fair treatment according to everyone's different and unique needs and situations, while also helping our partners in the BP ecosystem do the same. We want to see the world around us become a place where everyone can feel heard and appreciated, where they get great opportunities that perhaps their ancestors never had, where they're able to pursue their dreams and achieve what was never possible. So with that, on behalf of BP, I'm happy to present this seventy-five thousand dollar installment towards H C C's Northeast Colleges Dual-Credit Program with Barbara Jordan High School and the Houston Independent School District. I want to share my appreciation again for H C C's efforts and all that it does for its students, and thank you all for your continued commitment and partnering with us in this program. So thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Next, we're going to be pausing for the ceremonial swearing-in of Houston Community College Chief of Police, Michael Benford. We now will welcome to the podium Pastor Dallas Blalock of First Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church. He will be administering the oath, so if we can get Pastor Blalock and Chief Benford up here to the, uh, area.
Greetings to you all, Pastor Blacklock. We got close. Chief Benford, if you would join me, raising your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Benford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
For Houston Community College.
Houston Community College.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
God bless you.
Thank you. I promise I'll be brief, uh, primarily because if I don't, I'll start crying up here, and I don't want to do that. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the chancellor and the board for giving me this opportunity. I want to thank my family, my wife Gina, my daughter Taylor, uh, I see my nieces, uh, Tia Kia and Venetia in the back. I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, the law enforcement, uh, brothers and sisters that came out to support me. Also, uh, my fraternity brothers and men of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated at every turn, uh, I always see them in the audience supporting me, so I want to thank them for that opportunity, I mean, for coming out and supporting me. So again, I am extremely happy to be here. I'm honored to have this position, and I look forward to, uh, being a part of this community for a very long time, so thank you again.
Thank you, chief, and also thank you Pastor Blacklock. We also take this opportunity to recognize local law enforcement officials who are joining us today. We'll go through the list here. Chief Troy Finner, Houston Police Department. Chief Casey Davis, University of Houston Downtown Police Department. Chief Russell Miller, U H Clear Lake Police Department. Chief Solomon Cook, UML I S D Police Department. Chief Paul Willingham, Lone Star College Police Department. Chief Sean Wright, Seabrook Police Department. Chief Vera Bumpers, Metro P D. Assistant Chief Lucretia Shay Rogers, Houston I S D Police Department. Chief Dan Turner, Aleaf I S D Police Department. And Captain James Phillips, Precinct Seven Constable. We also want to recognize the H C C P D command staff and officers who are present with us today. We thank you for taking the time out of your schedules to attend this occasion. Your presence is greatly appreciated. And at this time, we would like to ask the chancellor, board members, and the family of Chief Benford to join us in front of the dais for a group photo. Thank you, chancellor and trustees. Mr. Board Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Hey. Well, on behalf of the board, we welcome, uh, Chief Benford, of course. Look forward to, uh, a long and illustrious tenure, and, uh, we'll get on, I guess, with the rest of our agenda here because?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, can we just take a moment to, I, I think BP may have left the room, Mark, but just want to say thank you to BP for the continued partnership and support, and, um, also, we're happy to have our new chief, and congratulations, and thank you for joining our team.
I too wanted to say thank you to BP, you know, for, um, for their monies and for continued support of H C C, and, uh, again, congratulations to our new chief. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Um, yeah, I did want to, um, just, just ask, um, thank BP because a lot of the innovative work that we do, uh, we could not do without the funding of our partners. work that we do, we could not do without the funding of our partners. So we appreciate that, and welcome aboard, Chief Benford.
My turn, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to our chief. We're excited and we look forward to working with you, and we know you're going to keep us safe along with your men. And to BP, thank you so very much for your support. That will definitely change lives and impact the lives we serve. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to do that. Thank you. Because the person who put their money into what they believe in, and I'm grateful that they did. And I just want to say thank you so much for that donation and to our new chief, Chief Benford. Congratulations. We welcome you. I am one of those family members in retirement, so I want to thank you.
Chairman?
Hey.
We're very excited about this commitment to Northeast and to dual credit. As we know, dual credit is very important to our marginalized communities. It does engage our students, our K-12 students successfully. And Chief Benford, thank you so much for accepting the position. We look forward to your leadership and we are excited to have you here.
We're going to change the order of the agenda here for a bit. We have several trustees that are going to be needing to leave early, and we'd like to try to get through the items that require a vote, which means if we were to fall below five trustees physically present here, we would be unable to complete the votes. So the first thing is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any items that the trustees wish to remove from the consent agenda for separate Hearing none. Let's proceed to a vote on the consent agenda as it is presented in the agenda book. And Sharon, if you'd... There we go.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
We'll now move on to item B, and I'm only going here to items that require a vote. We'll come back afterwards and pick up all the report items. Is there a motion to approve item B? Approve and authorize an inter-local agreement at Missouri City Campus to the city of Missouri City.
No move, Flowers.
Second, Laredo.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll now discuss the item. Chancellor Maldonado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We recommend to the Board the approval of this inter-local agreement with the city of Missouri City that would allow us to jointly work with the city in regards to beautification and allow them to proceed with the beautification project along Texas Parkway. If the Board has any questions on this item, I will ask Marshall Heinz to take the podium. Are there any questions, trustees?
Trustee Glazer?
A question on the property that's in question. Was that restricted property when we first purchased it?
What's the question?
Heinz, yes. When we originally acquired this property, was... I see in the presentation that it says HCC can have build and develop this area and campus even without this agreement. Were there restrictions on this property when we purchased it?
There are two easements on there, and a right-of-way. On Texas Parkway, there's a road right-of-way, and then there's a storm sewer easement. So this development and improvements they're planning are inside of that storm sewer and easement force. And so we could not build a parking lot or a building on that land anyway, very similar to what we talked about at Central a few meetings ago. So we can't do it, and that was put on there prior to us owning the property.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
This is a beautification project. This is landscaping.
Yes, ma'am. The city of Missouri City has a vision for a grand master plan, has many phases to it. This is one of the phases, and this will improve the Texas Parkway and also improve the front of our campus. And the only thing that we've asked for really is to control the height of the bushes. We don't want to put large oak trees or something that would someday obscure our college building campus, so they're working with us on that easement.
Apparently that's it for the questions or comments, so Sharon, if you would display the voting block.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item C? The Cooperative Contract Awards for Fiscal Year 2022.
No move, Trustee Reckert.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll now have discussion regarding the item. Chancellor Maldonado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustees will recall that this item was something that was brought forward before for approval, and there were some questions about the amount that we were seeking approval on for these cooperative contracts. And as a result, we have reduced the amounts and looking at the amount that is typical as a COVID spending year, those amounts were reduced and fall within my approval authority. Those were not brought forward today for approval. The items that remain on the approval list are those items that are above my approval limit and are necessary for us to continue our business. Did not see a... These are technology items that did not see a reduction related to COVID, directly related to COVID. So we're bringing these for your approval today to allow me to negotiate and execute contracts for the attached items through purchasing cooperative agreements within the approved fiscal year 2022 budget.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Trustees.
I need a little bit more clarity. I think I may have missed something. I... When we approved the Cooperative Contract Award List, I thought it was excluding only two items, which may have been America to go and Fraga. So...
Take off.
Oh, that's next or something? Yes. Oh, so we don't have to vote on that because it's dropped down so low. And so with these, there's been a reduction, Chancellor Flowers, is the same?
Not in these two. And the two that were reduced, they were reported on trustee inquiry number 200.
Okay, they don't come back to the agenda.
The reason for the reduction and that they fell below the $500,000.
Okay, okay. And so with this... Thank you. You just educated me. This is... I'm still learning. I'm still new. And so here, these items remain the same or did they reduce? What was it previously? These two?
I'm sorry?
What was the amount on the previous... For like Oracle, what did we have initially?
These remain the same.
They remain the same. There were no changes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Glazer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In reading the notes on the second page, it says cost for three-year agreement, but I only see two years, $430,000 for two years, $860...
Do you have your microphone on?
I do. Let's get a little closer. There we go. It states cost for three-year agreement, $860, and it shows two years at $430 apiece. Is there another year somewhere or already into the first year? Or is that... I'm not sure where we're getting three years from there.
Marshall?
It is... Actually, the Microsoft... Yeah. Yeah, where it says cost for three-year agreement, so you're saying that should say cost for two-year agreement?
Marshall, could you speak up? I'm having a hard time.
I see the two years at $430, which equals $860. And then where are we getting from the $860 to the... I assume there's another zero. It's supposed to be there's 1.1 million, right?
Well, right below that, you'll see $143,000 for the Microsoft Premier Renewal.
Right.
And then the Microsoft Intune Mobile Device Management is another $97,000. So if you add all those together, I believe that comes up to the 1.1 million.
Okay, that gets our total, but I still don't see where we have a three-year agreement. It seems like it's only covering the span of two years.
Phil, you're here.
If I may. Can you hear me? Okay. For clarification, that is a multi-year, three-year contract. The two that you're seeing are the... Would be for this current fiscal year, now fiscal year '22, and then the last one is '23, the first of which was fiscal year '21. And so it is a three-year, multi-year contract. And so what we're not showing is what we've expended already. And I think previously, we may have presented all three years on a multi-year in the past, but now we're bringing forth, as a matter of process, current year and bringing it to the Board for approval for each year.
So we're approving a three-year contract, but we're already in the first year of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I have a question. I was going to say, you know, we're here first, we're here two more years. Okay, I'm looking at the... Where's that?
So the 1.1 million, trustee, is that your question?
Yes.
That's the sum of the 430 plus 430 plus the 143, 674. That's the premier. Plus the $97,000, that's the MDM, mobile management. Correct.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, can we proceed to a vote then? Sharon, if you'd display the voting block.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item D? The Personnel Agenda Faculty.
No move, Flowers.
Second, Laredo.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll now have discussion. Chancellor Maldonado?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustees, we bring forward for your approval today full-time faculty contracts. There are eight that are listed in the agenda packet. These are all budgeted positions. And we... Being used to replace vacancies that have been created by departures or retirements. Glad to answer any questions you may have on.
Okay, there is a lobby for...
I can't understand.
I'm not getting it either.
Sorry, trustee, what's your question?
Yeah, I'm thinking. No, they said these are replacing for retirement or the...
Yes, ma'am. Except for, there are two positions that are being swapped. Items three and four, we have a dental hygiene faculty, program director, and an instructor that are reversing roles. So they're not new employees, didn't vacant, but they're new contracts for their new role.
Trustee Glazer, you wanted to...
I just wanted to clarify that I guess this is a net zero on headcount for faculty, and this aligns with our projected enrollment.
They're positions that have classes to be taught. I don't know that they're... We wouldn't be hiring them if we didn't have positions for them. So I don't know if they meet the forecast that we had for enrollment or not, but there are positions that have students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on this one?
We're ready to vote.
Okay, hearing none. Go ahead and display the voting block.
The motion passed unanimously with a vote of nine to zero.
Is there a motion to approve item E? Approved request for report on contractual spending for fiscal years 2013 through 2020.
Second, Flowers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is not one that comes from the administration. This is the result of a request by trustee Flowers. And I put it on the agenda, which is not what we normally do with reports, because the Chancellor has conveyed to me that he believes that this particular report will require the creation of information that does not currently exist in our databases, and that this creation process would require a significant expenditure of funds. And although I suppose the current bylaws allow me to vote one to nothing on this, I've never been a big fan of voting one to nothing. So I put it on the agenda for the trustees to decide whether or not they believe that such a report would be sufficiently valuable to justify the expense. And I think there's a couple of things that we should be throwing into the mix here. Board Council, I think maybe it would be inappropriate time to ask you, what are the legal issues that might be involved in the creation of the kind of information that would be required to do this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and to clarify, there's not necessarily a legal issue, but the point that I raised prior to the meeting is I just wanted to make sure before we approved a scope for the request that we could confirm that the scope of what was being requested was available and could be provided. So not necessarily... So not necessarily a legal issue, but just to make sure that we're clear on the scope before, before the, the board votes, to, to clarify what, what is available, what can be provided, what the board wants to see in the report.
The information that we, well, I guess maybe rather than leave everyone in the audience wondering what this is actually about, we have a request for the administration to prepare a full account of HCC's contractual spend for fiscal years 2013 through 2020. The request asks that spending details be broken down according to expenditures with businesses categorized by size, domicile, gender, and race. It's my understanding in the discussion with the administration that we do in fact have information on the size of business, and obviously, if you have an address, you know where it's, the business is located. But we do not have in our databases any data dealing with gender or race. The, the request further asks that the report detail how much and what percentage of total spend went to businesses in each of the different categories. Chancellor, I'd asked you to make the best guesstimate that you could at this point as to what it would be involved in creating this information?
Yes, sir, you did. And I've discussed it with, with Marshall Heinz, our CFO, and with your permission, I'll turn the floor over to him to step through the types of things that we would have to go through to get the information, to the information that we don't have. The, and even on domicile, I'm not sure that we have, we have a communication address, but we're not sure that is the headquarters, or, or where that business is incorporated. And with that, with your permission, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Heinz to explain the, going into some detail about the information that we have, or what, what we don't have.
Mr. Chair, can I consult with counsel? Before they start, I'd like to consult with counsel.
Go ahead.
In the public sector, is contract spend, public information to the public, outside the board?
Yes.
So someone from the outside could request this exact same thing?
Correct, the contracts and the information. My understanding is that, and I, excuse me, would need to defer to procurement or somebody on this matter, but procurement processes do not collect gender and race information, because that process is supposed to be gender and race neutral under law. But the rest of it, you're correct, that the public contracts would be public information, the contract would be public information.
Gender and race, we don't use as a qualifier or disqualifier?
Correct.
Or collect the information, but the, we do have to request an address, and we do know the size of the business approximately, and we do know what the contract spend is. And that is all, not just privy to the board, but it's public information, correct?
Correct. It is my understanding all of that information is, is collected, and yes, you are correct that that would be public information.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Melissa, since you're there, just to clarify, a public information request can't require us to go and get that information, right? It can only be turned over if it's something we have in our files already.
Right, a public information request cannot require the creation of a document. It can require you to just produce what is in your files. This is different. This is not a public information request. As a member of the Board of Trustees, if you're requesting something in your official capacity that you feel is necessary to perform your duties as a trustee, you do not have to go through the processes for the public information.
Thank you.
All right, and to, to make the point, the reason that I put it on the agenda is that if funds have to be expended to create this information, I thought it appropriate that the trustees be allowed to weigh in on whether they thought the value of the information justified whatever expense we might have to go to create it.
Mr. Chair, so can't we just hand over what we have and let the trust, I guess, who's, who's asking for it? Are we?
Trustee Flowers is the one that's asking for it.
So can't we just give her the information, and, and she can then get the info? Well, wouldn't it be in the file for each of the contract? No, no, that, no, yeah.
Right. Well, Mr. Heinz, if you go ahead and, what I'm trying to basically set up here is, if we know, if we have at least some idea what kind of a cost we're talking about, and we'll let trustee Flowers speak to the, the use or value of the information that she's requesting, you guys can form your own judgment on whether or not you think it's something we want to spend that kind of money on.
Question, so how are we going to get that rate, I mean, gender, if we're not supposed, how would we get that, Melissa?
We don't.
Oh, so why would we pay for someone to do that? Search each contract and see if it's owned by a male or a female?
So, and that, that was my point in raising the, the question, that we need to clarify the scope. If the information's not available, it's possible that the trustee would want to proceed with the information without that information. I don't know, as I said, I'm not as familiar with the procurement processes, to know whether there's something that could be provided as an alternative to that information. I just, I just don't know the answer to that question. So my recommendation was that we discuss the scope, and if something that's been requested can't be provided, offer something that may be provided in its place, or just reduce the scope to exclude that information.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Melissa a quick question? So, this isn't something the administration asked for, so it's not, we don't have a clear purpose for the information? Certainly, there are impermissible ways to use the information that could lead to some problems, right?
Well, the use of the information, yes, but requesting the information, and we've got attorney general opinions that say that a board member who requests information that the board member feels is necessary in the performance of their duties, they're entitled to that information. And so, irrespective of the use, the use would be a separate issue. All that's been requested right now is to provide the information for review.
Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
Trustee Van Alstover.
When we do the applications, when, when, when companies and corporations submit their bids, once upon a time in these submissions, there was a question about if they had minority participation, and there was a yes or a no, correct?
I'm, I'm having great difficulty hearing through the mask.
Small business.
I think I understand your.
Yeah, it wasn't just, yeah, it wasn't just small business. How, how do we do that? Because for governmental, for governmental standards, when you're requesting government funds, especially federal government funds, they ask those specific questions. If you have woman-owned participation, if you have minority participation, if you have small, standard, business-sized participation. Do we have those questions as part of our contractual requests for proposals? Do we have that information?
It is my understanding we have some of those. I believe that the small, HCC does have a small business program, and I believe that the employee who's responsible for overseeing that program is available online to respond to specific questions. It's my understanding, though, that we don't, that the college in the procurement process does not collect that MWBE information, but does the small business. And I, and I think that Veronica, if she's on the line, could clarify that, if I'm understanding. Is that right, Ashley?
That's correct.
Okay, who is, oh, hi Veronica. I was like, who is Veronica? Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. So there is some sort of standard of basic information collection, correct?
Correct. And again, Veronica, that was a small business program at HCC. Um, and HCC has sixty years, and every year we get to that our goal of thirty-five percent of our local business owners, our little dollars going to our small businesses. I've spent five years, it is a public procurement, and fifteen years managing programs does this. Our program at HCC is a small business program, and according to our procedures, we don't collect that information. It's race and gender neutral, and it's based on the size of your business. And then we don't certify, but we recognize the certifications of six different agencies. Now, we do have the contracting plans that the prime contractors are required to submit. However, again, it's a small business program, we don't collect information that's based on grade or gender. It's based on your size and the certification that we recognize from the six agencies. So we do not collect that information. We only have information on the small business.
And so we have the information on the small business, so we also have the information on the certifications that that small business may have. Is that correct?
That is correct. And for further clarification, a couple of years ago, we made improvements to our program. We realized that a small business also meets the requirements of minorities, of women, of persons with disabilities, certification as well, through the city of Houston. So what we did was we worked with our legal counsel to allow the, for us to allow, to be able to recognize those certifications. So although we don't track who is a minority from the city of Houston, we recognize the minority certification, the disability business certification, the women-owned business certification, and the person with disability certification. This is in addition to the state SBE certifications that we recognize. So just wanted to make that clear, so everybody understands the certification that we recognize and appropriate.
So for the city of Houston, there's DBE, SBE, MWBE, there's also the disability business and veteran-owned. So all of those, we ask the question, but we don't keep the information in the system?
If they qualify after seeing, we don't recognize veterans. It's not a veteran program, we don't recognize the veteran certification. If the supplier qualifies with the city of Houston, a minority, a disability, a person with disability, or a woman-owned business, they've met the criteria of a small business through the SBA. Our program is based on the requirements of the SBA standards for a small business. So the city of Houston, if you, if they certify you as a minority, a person with disability, a small business, a disability business, or a woman-owned business, we recognize you as a small business. However, since our program is race and gender neutral, when they come over to us, we recognize them as a small business. We don't recognize them as anything other than what our program requires us to recognize them as.
Okay, so we do a general small business, but we don't break out, we don't break it out by category?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's technically not a way to find out, other than to ask the city of Houston if those said businesses have certain certifications and what they are, because that question can be asked. Is that correct?
Those additional certifications oftentimes come over to us. So if a vendor has a certification and they're a minority from the city of Houston, we have that in our possession. However, they are considered a small business to us. So we do have the minority certification, and they're all online. However, we don't track who is a minority and who is a woman, because our program requires us to track the small business certification.
Okay.
It becomes easier to work with the city and include additional certifications versus continuing to ask people to go get certified at different agencies. And we made this change a couple of years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heinz, I, I think we, we're, we're still trying to give you the opportunity to re.
But is asking you.
I have a question.
Okay, so I see, right on.
Well, is this, what I wanted to know, if this information that's been asked for, is it for maybe information for a future bond election? Is, what would be the reason to go back so many years versus five years, three years? That's, that's what I was just wondering.
I guess trustee Flowers, you might as well go ahead and, and respond to what you're.
My request is based on the complaint filed by the chancellor on February nineteenth, 2021, that you all have privy to, and that we've discussed numerous times in closed session.
Thank you.
Heinz, go ahead and try here.
Okay, I, I just. So Mr. Heinz is just going to attach monetary value to this? Is that what that is? Is that what his presentation is? Because I still have questions that don't relate to cost.
I'm, I'm really having trouble, I guess, hearing through the mask. Sorry about that.
Okay, I was a little confused about what Veronica was saying. So when, if I, John Q, apply for, respond to an RFP, and I have two different MB certifications, MWBE certifications, one for race, one for gender, when I apply, do I disclose to the college those two certifications, or do I just say that I'm MWBE certified? Do I have to provide those certifications to the college at the time of application?
Yes. We, when the submissions are received, when they respond to the receipt of the procurement, during the evaluation period, small business goes in, and we review and make sure certification is valid and in place. We validate that, we sign off on that, and we give it back to the buyer. Certification has to be in place in order for points to be given.
Right, I, I understand that. So walk me through how that information is or is not documented and kept. So from the point that I turn it over to the college, to the point where you no longer know if it exists?
Okay, once the contract has been awarded, and there is a prime that has agreed subcontract up, the, the goal on, on the contract, it's entered into a contract compliance system that's known in this area as B2G. What B2G also does, it helps us to validate and to keep up with the expiration on the certification of the certified vendor, whether that's the prime and/or the sub. And every time HCC makes a payment to that prime, he is tickled in the system to let us know, did he give the subcontractor a portion of that work, or did he keep it in himself? The subcontractor also has to go into the system and say yes or no about receiving the payment. So we have a contract.
Okay, so, so that, I, I think you might have misunderstood my question. So I, John Q, provide to you copies or documentation saying that I have these two certifications? Once I provide that to you, how is it in the system? Do you just not document it in the system and then do away with that information? Is it purged? Or does our system not keep track of it in some way? How do we arrive at not knowing what the certifications are, w- once the certifications are provided, is what I'm trying to get to? What happens that we?
Okay. Well, we know, they're not even going to be able to receive in the evaluation process. So when the buyer looks at the small business portion, looks at that piece of the response, they then from the certifications over to me. Once that's looked, they review them, I turn it back to the buyer, he will allocate the points one way or the other, and continue on the review process. Once it's been awarded, that awarded contract goes in the system, and we watch the, the complaint from there. We have the information on the certifications, but we, but we don't track anything other than small business participation. The certification information is readily available. It's, we don't track how much we have spent with different ethnic groups, because it's a small business program.
So what we're saying is, we do have it, because they have submitted it, you just don't compile it?
We do have that.
Because if you go back to the RFP.
It's all electronic, yes.
Then it's there.
We would have to go back, yes. During the evaluation stage, the small business portion is taken out, and it's reviewed by the buyer, and then it's reviewed over by the Small Business Development Program. We review it for accuracy to make sure that they have met the goal, that they have subcontractors down that are certified. From there, it goes back to the buyer, and the buyer allocates whether or not they will receive points, and it goes through the process. The awarded vendor, that information is then tracked through the contract compliance system. So we do have the information. The information that's being requested that we do not have is the spend for ethnic groups. And that is because this is a small business program, and our procedures do not allow for that.
Gotcha, thank you. And the, okay, I, I, I get it now. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm just confused. Was there another request that dealt with certifications? Because this looks like it's the race and gender for every single contract, regardless of small business or anything like that. Was the request, was there a request for certifications?
Well, everything that we're dealing with right here, it was based on trust. Well, everything that we're dealing with right here was based on Trustee Flowers' request, so the question is probably better directed to her in terms of what was her intent.
To answer your question, I, there's nothing in there that asked about certification. So there's a lot of discussion about certification. I think that's to arrive to the race and gender, but I asked nothing about certification.
Okay, but race and gender, that's a lot more information than just small business certifications, right? Because it's the race and gender of every single contract, regardless of whether it was a small business or, or whatever, right? I just want to confirm that it's broader than just information that we could potentially have in our files.
If I could clarify, I think the, the way that we got to the discussion of certification was if certain information is not tracked and could not be provided, there might be an alternative that could be provided in its place. And so there is a small business program. I'm not entirely clear on, on what certifications are, or records of certifications are maintained, but if there were a minority business enterprise or an MWBE certification that is maintained, while that doesn't respond directly to this crest, request, that could be an alternative piece of information, but I don't know to the extent to which that information is maintained.
Thank you.
If, if, just so we can move this along with the chair, I'd like to propose, Trustee Flowers, a friendly amendment to this before we continue discussion, if you are amenable to it, because I think what, at the county, for instance, they just did an audit, took in it probably months and months on the same thing, finally got to what they wanted, but it took an entire audit, and it was quite voluminous. And I think if we move forward like that, you might not get the information you need for quite some time, or the information you're looking for. So if you are amenable to an amendment, then maybe we can modify this motion to include the contractual spend for that set timeframe that they have available with the small business designation, because I think that's what we're saying, that, that's what you're saying you have, for now, and then maybe have the audit committee take up the other piece as a separate audit at some time in the future.
Okay, and I appreciate the proposed friendly amendment, and I want to be clear, this is in a full account of HCC's contractual spend. And I was requesting that of the, that within the chancellor's hiring and contracting practices for those contracts under the chancellor's $100,000 threshold, so I just want to make sure-
So you're narrowing the scope even further?
Well, it was never what's here.
Okay.
That's not what I submitted in writing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need to modify that piece as well?
I thought that I had pulled that from the request when I assisted in preparing the agenda items, so if it needs to be clarified or corrected, please tell me how so that we can do that and make sure we have the correct request on the record.
Yeah, it, it said the, under the chancellor's hiring and contracting-
Okay.
-practices for those contracts under the chancellor's $100,000 threshold. That's, it's, you can just cut and paste it from the letter.
So if we could, so Trustee Skiller-Jones procedurally made a friendly amendment.
Okay.
If you want to withdraw your friendly amendment and make a new friendly amendment.
Roger, may I just?
Yeah.
I, I can, but it looks like my colleague has something to say.
If, if it's under the $100,000 chancellor's discretionary spending, we don't collect that information, right? We don't collect that small business information.
Those, those contracts would still go through the procurement process.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that was it.
Is that, is that correct? Yes, General Counsel's confirming.
Yeah, the under $100,000 goes through the regular procurement process.
There's no exception to the procurement process.
Right.
It's whether it goes out for, you know, the mechanism might be different, but the processes are all the same.
Okay, so is it that I am to make a friendly amendment at this time?
Yes.
So I am requesting that we amend this to approve a request from a board member for the administration to prepare a full account of the chancellor's hiring and contracting practices for those contracts under the chancellor's $100,000 threshold. The request asks for the detailed spending be broken down in accordance with expenditures with businesses categorized by size. I guess endosile would be the only two that we could have access to?
That's, that's my understanding.
By size and domicile.
Veronica, is that correct? The only two criteria that, that are available would be the, the size of the business and the domicile of the business?
Yep, according to the SBA, they have to meet the requirements of the SBA size standards per industry, categorized by industry.
Is there a motion to accept the?
I just have one question. So do we want to add, when the, for contracts under the $100,000 threshold, they also come potentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, just so that we're clear, from a list that we approve as a board, like here are these attorneys you could choose from, or here are these, you know, groupings. So how, how do we distinguish those from that data? Am I making sense?
I think that may be distinguished by the $100,000.
Well, but let's say, let's say there's a list and the chancellor has $100,000, I mean, that's that threshold, he still can pick from that list as well, right?
The legal services.
The legal services is what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Because she gets, like, if, you know, we end up doing this, that she gets, that that's clear, I guess, I'm just saying.
I think those would still fall under that threshold, so would still be included-
Okay. Just so that we note it correctly. Mr. Chair, my only question is, is there going to be any cost, or is this just a set of keystrokes?
Her question was-
Is there going to be any cost to collecting this information, or is it just a matter of keystrokes?
Based on this reduced scope, that would certainly, you know, limit, you know, the amount of money you would spend and the time, but as the chancellor mentioned, we have a couple people out in COVID and have pretty severe illness with that, so it would take some time, just a guesstimate would be a few months to gather that together.
So because of, because there's a potential time constraint, does that mean we're going to have to hire outside people to do it, since we don't have people in the department to do it?
That is correct.
So we are going to have to hire somebody outside?
Yes.
Even with this limited scope?
That's correct.
Do we have any sense of how much it's going to cost?
I, I, just a wild guess would be if we use two people for three or four months, and, you know, they were, you know, through a consulting firm or something, they might be $10,000s or $20,000, $30,000 a month for that time.
So this is looking through just the information we have in our database, and with this limited scope, right?
What, what I'm hearing is what's under the chancellor's $100,000 limit, that it's limited to us awarding on SBE or not SBE, the, the volume or the price of the contract is, is what I'm hearing.
And the domicile.
And, and the domicile. And the only thing issue with the domicile, I had this on my list, is that a lot of times we're mailing back and forth to a PO box, so we don't know exactly where they are. They maybe have a PO box here, but they may actually be, you know, operating out of, you know, Little Rock, Arkansas. So they'll have to validate that as well. But certainly, this is, and the timeframe is the same, the 2013 to current date still? Yes. It's a lot of contracts.
Is there any way we could do this in-house, if we had a longer timeline, or is it just too, too big of a project for our team to do?
Again, the, the, even with a full staff in procurement, they're busy and we have a lot going on, as you see, as, as the board, and I would say that, you know, it would extend it, it, it would probably be over six months, nine months, you know, maybe something along those timeframes. And we have the holidays coming up as well as we go into the fall.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Marshall.
Would it make a material difference if we were talking about three years instead of seven?
Again, everything that we change in the scope, it would help. And the other thing that I thought about too is on my list, is that, you know, when you go back to 2013, you're capturing $450 million worth of contract awards that were taking place during the 2013 CIP, and a lot of those were, you know, massive contracts. These will be smaller ones, but there might be some smaller awards that went under the chancellor's authority of $100,000. We have to go back and look at those. If we pulled it forward, and, and again, not knowing the exact purpose of it, so if we came up to 2015, 2016, the current, that certainly would cut that in half almost. In terms of dollar volume, it would be tremendously different.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Most of the CIP is automated, it's, it's electronic, correct? Disbursements for the CIP for the 466 million, is that correct?
Well, you like to say electronic, you know, yes, you know, people bid on projects and, you know, they're selected, and, but again, as you have heard, and we've talked about before in, in this venue, is that we look at the SBE participation, we look at the experience, they get scored and rated, and those type of things, so that, the, the mechanical part, you know, you know, paying someone and, and going through that, that is somewhat computer-generated. What's not computer-generated is the scoring, and those are done by actual human beings that work at HCC, looking at tenure, looking at experience at HCC, looking at job experience for that type of project, et cetera. So those are all manually done and actually written down, and, and then a, a hearing meeting, you know, conducted for each one of those awards.
Okay, so if we're going to look at it, and we're going to look at the corporations who received approval and disbursements, do we have a database system where you can only look at those disbursements at or below $100,000 and with the chancellor's approval? Because those would technically be different from the general, generalized approval for CIP. For instance, if the chancellor made a decision to approve at or below $100,000 contract, that is his discretion, separate and apart from the CIP approval of a, of a disbursement at or below $100,000. Is there a designation between the two in the system database, where you can successfully manipulate the database under those two terms?
I think reducing it to that scope, I would think that, you know, for example, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud with you, and if I follow your question, is that you've got a contract award that was given to the contractor and the architect, et cetera, that may be very large numbers, but at the last minute, you're trying to open the building, you're auditing audiovisual system, and maybe it's 82,000, you're ordering a piece of furniture that's 50, you need tools, those type of things, you know, you start to add up the number of awards per project, it does add up. But yes, that would certainly reduce that number, and we could pull those out, the smaller awards.
So if you pull those out, and then you separate those further to determine if they were specific to the CIP, or if they were specific to the chancellor's authorization only, I think there's a difference between those two. I understand dispersment for large projects like that, and I understand last-minute decisions to open the building, so to speak.
Right.
But I'm, I'm trying to understand the entire database system that this should be based on, and the successful manipulation of that database system to extract information that you need, at or below $100,000, specifically under the chancellor's authorization, because for the CIP, that was not a necessary thing, that was dependent upon procurement, yes?
And, and I would have to spend some time with the procurement team, as I mentioned, and determine, because not all of those awards that are under $100,000 for projects are done by the chancellor, a lot of those go still straight through the, the normal process for approval. He just has the authority to prove it versus bringing it to the board. That's the only thing different in the process.
That would, I think that's the difference that, that Trustee Reagan Flowers is looking for, and I think that might make that scope much, much smaller. The assumption is it's not that many, am I correct?
But again, I, I, I can't give you any type of scope on how many contracts it is, and which ones were, you know, under 100, and how many of those were then, you know, approved by the chancellor's authority, how many were gone through the normal approval process.
Okay, then approved by the chancellor's authority, normal approval process, that would be a separating line item.
Mm-hmm.
Then maybe that's the place to begin.
I, you know, to give you a really good estimate, I, I still would stick with my estimate on a couple of people for a few months to do that and pull it together. I, I don't see how you, you know, we have people that are busy every day, and I have people banging on the door of procurement to push things through, and then it's got to go through legal. It's a lot of work to bring things to the board and get them approved, and so I can't interrupt their workflow without slowing down the work of the, of the organization. And that's why I'm saying that we need to have outside consultants, and what that costs exactly, I can't say. We're, we're here to do whatever the board asks us to do, and so we're happy to move forward to that.
Okay, so you can reduce the labor by actually submitting the preliminary document and then giving it to an outside firm to go through the details, rather than handing the outside firm the entire bailiwick and requiring them to do the separation and then do the detail, yes?
Well, again, trustee, I, I'm, I'm saying that the people that are working every day are very busy and, and working overtime, and they're really loaded up. And so if I ask them to do anything that's out of their ordinary work to, to keep the current operations of the college running, that will slow us down, and I would prefer to do that, and we would be better off financially by taking the time to hire outside people to do that. I can't bring in-
Chancellor, you want to break in?
Just me, I would like to say something.
I'm not sure-
This is Trustee Lynn. Oh, Chancellor.
Pardon me, trustee. I'm not sure what the objective is, but now if you start bifurcating every of these small pieces of procurement, you're not, and again, I don't know what it is the trustees are looking for, but you have to look at the totality of procurement, because the different, the amount, the contracts that are let on smaller amounts are also considered a work that we're doing with other vendors that are doing larger projects. So I, again, I don't know what the objective is, other than it was part of a complaint. I think we needed to find the objective in order to have a better plan to present the trustees, and, and if you start, although I think the reduced scope is helpful in gathering the information, without knowing what the goal of the information, what the purpose of the information is going to be, it might be misleading, one way or another, to look at the totality of what, what we procure. Trustee Flowers, do you want to say anything about that?
I'm yielding the floor to, it looks like, um, Trustee Skiller-Jones. Did you have something to say before I respond? Oh, and then there was Trustee Lynn Gary, I'm sorry. She, she was waiting.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that if, Trustee Flowers, if you feel that this is, this request is important and significant for you to be successful in your role as trustee, I think hiring two people for three months and spending approximately $60,000 is worth it, if you feel you will be more successful as a trustee. You, you made the request for a reason, and I'm sure you're going to tell us why you made the request, but if it will benefit you, then we should spend the $60,000.
That's all she had? So I want to understand about the system, because I'm a little familiar with the procurement systems. So what type of system are we using, and is it, is it in-house or outsourced?
Is your microphone on, Marshall?
I'm sorry, I turned it off. I would say 95% of what we do is done in-house with a- I would say 95% of what we do is done in-house with HCC employees and HCC equipment here in this building.
So we do have an outsource. So this particular information is managed by in-house systems, outsource systems?
I think I'm answering the question correctly is that the work that you're looking to examine was processed by someone that is employed by HCC, was carried out, was brought to the board or to the chancellor, and was awarded, and it's then put into storage.
Right, it's maintained outsourced, right, by some other entity?
No, it's maintained, I think, I believe. And I'm not an expert completely at that level of detail, but I believe it to be somewhere in this building. But someone's got to go pull that data out. And what I'm saying is the people that work eight or nine hours a day in procurement, doing their jobs as buyers, or Veronica does-
Right, I heard you when you stated all of that. What I, I'm asking a very specific question about the management of the system. So in order to get to who manages the system, so if we have outsourced people who already work with this, would it be more financially efficient to just ask them, if you can't spare personnel, to do this piece of it rather than hire on at a bigger cost some other folk?
Well, those people I mentioned are less than 5% probably of the total staff hours that are there. So it's a small piece, and those people too are already working. That's why we have that little piece outsourced. And so again, to keep the college running, I think that you would have to bring someone in. Now, I'm just giving you a ballpark estimate on what it costs. I don't know, we'd have to go look at that and get a proposal on it. And we'd have to narrow and define well the scope that we're asking for. And I said earlier, we're willing to do what you want us to do, happy to do that. And I just need the authority and the direction to go do that, and we can, you know, make that happen. But I'm telling you that I don't want to disrupt, I wouldn't recommend disrupting the current college staff that works and/or the small group. And when I say small group, it may be one or one and a half people that it's outsourced to, that works in that group.
Okay, so what would be your normal process for gathering data and information for public information requests or for chancellor's information? Who would get that work done normally?
So for example, if we had a trustee inquiry, right, if you're asking, for example, today, and somebody had a question, like just today, we talked about, you know, some contract awards. I have a hand in that, and I go visit with procurement. And currently, the executive director is out with COVID and has been for several months. I work with the director, and I work with a buyer, and they get, information comes up. I work with some people out of the chancellor's office, and it takes a lot of time and effort to respond to that. And we do that, and we gladly do that, and hope to clarify that. That same process would have to go on, and now if you ask us to do that on top of everything else, there's just not a much labor hours to do that.
Okay, so I want to say this publicly and to my colleagues and to the chancellor that trustees require information from time to time. Nothing that gets, is going to, if it doesn't get voted on, it's not actually going to happen for our students and for the college, right? And so sometimes there's going to be times that we require information to pass policy and to do those kinds of things. So that's, I'm not sure if we have traditionally looked at that as a priority, but I think people on this board probably would agree that we see that as a priority. And I think I've said to the chancellor when we were doing budget, because I've heard you stress several times that people are maybe overworked and at their capacity, that maybe we need to consider making space and expanding capacity so that we don't run into these issues, because information is very important. So if we need to have those discussions, I'm happy to have those. But whatever we need to do to accommodate trustees' priorities, I'm all for having those conversations. But back on topic, so what I'm hearing trustee Flowers is that the scope is probably adaptable to the less than six to nine months if we are looking at just chancellor-approved spend under $100,000. And I heard some discussion around reducing the years of the scope that might help as well from seven, I think it's currently at seven, to be able to get to where we need without there being any major upheaval in the system. Is that, does that correctly reflect what you were trying to convey?
You exactly articulated what I said.
So am I understanding then that the limit is 20,000 as you're proposing it on the expenditure?
I didn't deal with the number at all, I just dealt with the scope, the financial cost. I don't have a thinking about-
I don't know about the timing, would it please the board if we created a sample and tried to go do a quick survey?
I don't think that's necessary, nor, I mean, it doesn't sound like this has been done before. So I don't know that necessarily those dollar figures are appropriate either, because those are just estimates that are being grabbed out of the air. It's not based on any research or anything that was presented to us on man-hours that it would take or any cost per man-hour or any of that research that hadn't been done. So I'm not, that's not a consideration for me.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just, I want to be transparent about why I'm voting the way I'm voting. This isn't something I can support, and this is, you know, part of it certainly is dollars coming away from directly serving students to fund a request. But a lot of, a lot of my concern is that we don't have a broader purpose for this request. And, you know, there are plenty of things that I want, you know, information that I want. And, you know, certainly, there's been a time on this board where I, you know, information requests have, you know, would have, you know, just run into the hundreds of thousands. We're a changing board after this year, we're going to have situations where there is going to be a lot of information requests. And so I think it's really critical that our role is to look at these requests critically. I see my role as asking the chancellor what, telling the chancellor what my goal is and what I want to do, and having him figure out how to get it, as opposed to doing it kind of this backwards way and not even having a defined purpose for getting the information. I know when, you know, I love that the county looked for this information, but they had a specific goal and purpose for it. So that, for those reasons, it was, it was a good expenditure for them. But I just, I can't, you know, I just see this as a slippery slope. And, you know, we have the real potential to be taking more and more and more dollars away from directly serving our students to these efforts that are kind of amorphous and undefined and maybe not consistent with the strategy and all of the other, you know, all of the other things we have worked on as a board to do together. So that is just, I want to be transparent about why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote.
I believe trustee Flowers has an amendment on the floor. I was just going back through to process to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
She did make a friendly amendment, there were no objections, so that was, I'll clarify that, but I didn't know whether your comments were to be an additional amendment, because I think-
So my comments were to get some understanding for myself and to see if we were also amending the timeframes, because that was the discussion before I asked my question.
Okay, and by timeframe, you're referring to the 2013 and 2020?
Correct.
That being?
Anybody want to clarify that, and then see if somebody would want to make that friendly amendment? So, and I apologize, I can't do this in front of the microphone, because I need, I need to hear.
I can't hear.
Okay, so the friendly amendment that I have recorded is approve a request from a board member for the administration to prepare a full account of HCC's contractual spend, including the chancellor's contracting and hiring practices for those contracts under $100,000 for fiscal years 2013 through 2020, with spending details to be broken down according to expenditures with businesses categorized by size, in a parenthesis, small dash, hyphen, or slash, large, and domicile, local slash outside Houston. The request further asks that the report detail how much and what percent of total spend went to businesses in each of the different categories.
So if I could make a correction, I took out, I never asked for HCC's, a full account of HCC's contractual spend. I only asked for the chancellor's. And that continues to keep showing up, so that makes it larger.
Okay, so then I have approved request from a board member for the administration to prepare a full account of the chancellor's contractual spend for those contracts under $100,000 for fiscal years 2013 through 2020. The request asks that spending details be broken down according to expenditures with businesses categorized by size, small dash large, small slash large, domicile, local slash outside Houston. The request further asks that the report detail how much and what percent of total spend went to businesses in each of the different categories. So we need somebody other than, who made the motion, Sharon? I don't think trustee Flowers made the motion.
The original motion was made by, the first motion was made by Dr. Lynn Gary and second by Dr. Flowers. And then there was a friendly amendment made by, I guess, amendment by Dr. Flowers.
But if she didn't make the motion, she can make the friendly amendment. And then trustee Lynn Gary would need to accept the friendly amendment.
So I need to accept at this time?
The friendly amendment, yes, because you made the motion.
I accept the friendly, I accept.
So am I understanding correctly that approval of this motion would mean that the administration is ordered to prepare this regardless of what the total cost ends up being?
If it's approved by the board.
Oh, it would still come to the board for a final-
Well, you, the board still has to vote. We have, we have an action item, we've, there's been a friendly amendment.
I realize we're voting now, but I'm saying if it were approved, if this motion is voted through today, does that mean then that the administration is directed to go forward? And cost is essentially no object?
Well, the operational decision as to how the request will be fulfilled is an operational decision for the administration. If there's going to be a contract for an outside entity to perform the service, whether or not that contract would come back to the board would depend on the amount of the contract. The board could further modify this amendment by requesting that that contract come back regardless of the amount, if that's the desire.
Well, I would certainly favor that myself, but I'm only one trustee here.
So then we would need either a friendly amendment or a motion to amend the already amended item.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Eva Laredo, can you hear me?
We're seeing your eyebrows, Eva.
Okay, good. Well, I just wanted to just make sure, did we break down the scope of time? Are we still going to 2013? Because I thought we were going to reduce the time.
The item on the floor right now is 2013, 2020, that can be amended as well.
Okay. So, to share a few more things. One, this request was made in March of 2021, and we are in September. So it's taken this long for us to talk about it and to take some action. When we talk about expenses and student success, I am a proponent of that. But in order for us to be good stewards and good leaders in our jobs and what we do, we have to have information. Now, if the board so chooses, I can read my entire letter that I read to all of you in closed session. I'm happy to put it on the record here. But in that letter, I address the words that were shared by the chancellor in that letter. And in that, I outlined my request as that is what inspired it. All of you have a copy. Now, when we talk about funds, as a board, we do require some expenses to do our job. When I look at what just occurred at our last meeting with $800,000 and $700,000 for food, award was on the table, and office supplies, and we're in COVID, and then it got reduced to 200,000 or 300, or 100,000, I mean, it's just significantly reduced. Because I asked the question, how are we spending $800,000 in supplies and we're at home working? So if we care about funds, we would all be asking those types of questions. But we do have to spend money to make sure that we're doing things the right way. Now, this is a very litigious institution, more so than any other institution that I've seen in terms of community colleges, unless you guys can tell me of others. I respect how you want to vote. This is a request that was made, we should care, we should be concerned. You do not have leaders like an HIS D or the mayor, they do not have this $100,000 threshold, I believe it's 50,000. So ours is higher than most institutions. So the request is to do a good job and to have the information to do a good job. And again, if you all need clarity as to why this request was made, I'm happy to read the letter that I submitted to you all, March 22nd, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I have to step away because I had an emergency on the call, so I'm going to abstain because I didn't hear all the conversation, so I just wanted to put that on the record.
Okay. Make sure that's included in the minutes, if you would, Sharon. Are we at a point where we need to just take a vote and see where everybody comes down on this one?
Do you have a second?
Well, Mr. Chair, I heard the question asked, why are we, you know, pretty much, why are we discussing this? Why was the request made? And can't, no one can talk on that but trustee Flowers. And so in order to adequately vote, I think she should share why she made the request. If you're willing, trustee Flowers.
Chancellor, was this part of a complaint?
Exactly, we need the attorney here. It was part of a complaint that would be a closed session discussion. As far as the reason for, and I don't know if you heard the, but I believe you just provided the reason why you were making the request regarding your responsibilities as a board member and fiduciary duties. And I don't know if that's responsive to your question, but I agree that this is part of a complaint that would need to be read, if the letter were going to be read in closed session- session under the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, because I keep, you know, my audio keeps going in and out, so I can't hear everything. That's why, that's why I was asked.
Yeah, do you have the information you need? I don't want to put, I don't want to restate your response trustee Flowers, but I don't know if trustee Linton Gary is.
I can't hear her. Sorry, did you need me to repeat what I said moments ago?
I can hear you now, yeah, because I couldn't hear you.
Okay, so you want me to repeat everything I said moments ago?
Well, just, you can give me a little version, just sum it up.
Okay, so basically, I was sharing that in March, I submitted this request in response to a statement that was made by the chancellor, is what inspired this. And that is stated in the letter that I submitted to the board on the 22nd. I shared that it's taken this long for this matter to come forward to some action, which is now September the 22nd. I shared that as board members, there are some expenses that are incurred in order for us to do our job. We're not abusive of that, that's never the intention, but we do need transparency and we do need the information in order to be good at what we need to do here in our role as board members for what we have taken and sworn an oath to do. With that, I gave examples that we just, the last board meeting had a couple of items on the agenda related to food and office supplies that was tremendously over budget. And it was reduced, thank goodness, but only after asking a question. Had we not asked the question, it would have went forward, and it was a significant reduction. And I shared how litigious it is here at this institution, at HCC, I would say more so than most other community colleges. But if someone, you know, knows anything different, I'm happy to hear that, but very litigious here. And also shared that in this, we have, our chancellor has $100,000 threshold, and that is unlike anything you would see at other institutions. I think at HIS D and the city, I think it's $50,000. And so there are some things we have to look at in making sure that we're doing things the right way. And I shared it's all in the letter that inspired this, that was submitted in March.
Thank you so much for explaining.
My pleasure.
I'd like to call for the vote if we could.
You're calling the question then?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is there objection to calling the question?
Mr. Chair, I was trying to call you, but I was muted. I was, can I say something before we move on for the question?
Well, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I was just going to say that years ago, it was $50,000 for the chancellor spending, then it went up to 70, 75, because we didn't, the board did not want to, everything to be brought continuously. So that's why we took it up to $100,000, so that, you know, and then when he works with procurement. So I know that everything has to go through procurement, and so we just, I know, I was concerned about that complaint as well when it first came out, but I know that, and I questioned it. And so whenever employees, you know, bring it up to the chancellor, he's got to forward it. And so that's what makes it looks, you know, like it's like him against us, but really, we should not look at it like that. It's like we're all one, and so we need to make sure that we all work together. And, you know, and then procurement is, has so many duties that they have to, they have to follow guidelines as well. So I appreciate that they try to protect us. And so that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'll repeat, is there objection to calling the question? Okay, I'm hearing none. Put up the voting block Sharon, if you would.
Before we vote, just to note that this is as amended because of the friendly amendment.
Didn't come up?
No ma'am.
Oh, oh, I have to.
Do you want to verbally?
Yes, because I don't, I don't see anything, so yes, I vote yes.
In favor, affirm.
In the amendment, yes, for the amendment.
Okay, the motion.
Trustee Laredo, it was a friendly amendment?
Sharon, Sharon.
On the item as amended.
Sharon.
Yes.
My vote is for.
Okay, so just for the record, we're changing, it was, we had the abstained, but you?
Yeah, that, yeah, that was accident, it's for.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of picks in favor, two opposing, and one abstaining.
Chair, can you read the motion, just because I've missed it, please?
I think I've got it right, so I was typing it for Sharon for the minute. So I have approved a request from a board member for the administration to prepare a full account of the chancellor's contracting and hiring practices for contracts under $100,000 for fiscal years 2013 to 2020, to be broken down according to expenditures with businesses categorized by size, small slash large, and domicile, local slash outside Houston. The request further asks that the report detail how much and what percent went to businesses in each of the different categories. Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just, I know the vote's already complete, I just had a question, the information that's being requested is already in our system, we're not being asked to create new information, right? That was part of it, correct? That we're soliciting information that's already in our system?
Well, the information exists in our databases, but it's not organized in the way that it's being requested.
It has to be compiled, but it's, but it's, okay, okay. Thank you.
The size of the businesses and the dollar amount.
Just those two.
Right.
Okay.
The dollar amount, because that's in the contract with the spending.
I think maybe we can expedite some things here. We want to note for the record that the following items have been pulled by the administration and will be presented at a later date. That's item F, the acceptance of donated property item from Subaru of America, and item G, acceptance of donated property item from Audi of America. The following reports are in the agenda material. If the trustees have no objection, we'll forego hearing the reports today, and that would be item A, the report on COVID-19 expenditures, item H, the junior college audit report, and item I, the report on capital improvement program. Is there objection to eliminating the actual presentations on those today?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did you include item A?
Well, it's basically all the remaining ones, item A, item H, item I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm hearing no objection, so we'll consider that agreed to, and we can get back now to the presentations that we were halfway through. At this time, we'll invite Emilio Mendoza from, with the HCC Hispanic Scholarship Committee to come forward for the presentation and recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Is Emilio Mendoza still here, or did he give up?
Here.
Okay.
I was just about to give up. I was told I was moved to the next meeting, but I want to thank you chancellor, trustees, chairman, for this opportunity. I wanted to share a story with you. You know, when I was a kid, I got a lot of anxiety when we would have substitute teacher day, because they would do the attendance, and they would go down and they would roll call. And when they got to my name, Emilio, they just would massacre it. The best was, is when they would try to say it, and then they halfway started to spell it out so that I would recognize my name and say something. Well, leave it to my creative fellow third graders. I was called a lot of, whatever name I was called, I would be called that for the rest of the day. And so Emilio kind of evolved into what my nickname is now, which is Mila, which evolved into Meatloaf. So for a long time, I was Meatloaf. And this gave me a lot of apprehension and anxiety about my Hispanicness, because one of the things, one of the things that it did was it made me embarrassed. You know, people would ask me if my mom cleaned houses and how I came to this country. And so I, you know, relegated the way that I spoke, and I wanted to become more mainstream. And I didn't want to have that identity, I didn't want to be associated with that, because I was embarrassed about it. As I move forward into my life as an adult, I'm so proud of that part of me, and I think that it really gives me strength. And I'm so proud of this moment that has surfaced for me right now, because that little me at the time would never have thought that I would be proud to be able to come and talk to you about how I appreciate the fact that we have our Hispanic Heritage Month. And so why do we have it? How did it come to be? What is it about? Why is it relevant? And for that, I have a little presentation for you. And that's it. Thank you for wanting me to come and give you this presentation. Good night.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza, for the presentation and overview and recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. Anybody want to make any comments on it before we move on?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just want to say, beautiful presentation, thank you so much, and I learned a whole lot. So did not know about how the different countries were sharing and celebrating at different times and how it became a month. So thank you so much for the education and for being here and being so patient and not giving up.
Okay, anybody else?
Quite informative, thank you, and thank you for bearing with us, that was informative. I learned some governmental stuff that I didn't know. That was all done before I was born, of course. But I just want to say to all of our Hispanic Heritage colleagues, faculty, staff, and students, happy to join in the celebration this month. I think our ethnic cultures are important to preserve and to honor, and I am happy that this presentation was made today. Chair, just great job as always. You're an incredible asset to this college, especially because of who you are and the impact that you have on our students. So thank you for all you do as well, and great job. Can you email me that? I still have last year's.
This is trustee Linton Gary. Emilio, I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and I'm just grateful you grew to appreciate and accept and embrace your heritage, because you are who you are because of your heritage. And I'm grateful that you realized that and embraced it.
Chairman? Emilio, when will you be sending that to us? Excellent, may I have permission to pose tonight? Thank you.
Okay, everybody, everybody down? Okay, we'll move on then. We'll now move to the chancellor's report.
Good evening trustees, certainly been some time since presented the traditional board report. I'm excited that this report marks another indication of us returning to some level of normalcy. The pandemic has brought us many challenges, both individually and collectively as a college. The way our staff, students, and faculty have navigated uncharted waters is nothing less than remarkable. And I thank all of you for your dedication and your persistence. This past weekend, the Texas Trustee Institute focused on reports on student performance. And as part of the performance goals adopted by the board of trustees, we will be highlighting metrics on a regular basis and reporting on a schedule that was adopted in setting those goals. And today, I'm sharing some data on the trend of students that achieved core, six or more, excuse me, students that achieved six or more credits in their first year. This is for a first time in college students. You can see the trend from 2013 through 2019, all an upward trend due to the great work of our faculty and staff in supporting the students. The numbers you see for 2020 are preliminary, they're not completed yet. We expect to see some downturn in them, but we're hopeful that that will not be a severe downturn and will keep moving up. downturn and will keep moving up in a positive way with our student success. And the graph here is shown by ethnicity. You'll be seeing more of this to come. The Steve Fund is something that we're a partner with, to now. The student performance is strongly affected by the mental health of our students. Therefore, it is critical that we support the mental well-being of our students. The Steve Fund is dedicated to the mental health and emotional well-being students of color. And to this end, we partnered with the Steve Fund to help develop data-informed processes and practices that transform our college climate, policies, and practices to promote the mental health and emotional well-being of students of color. We will work with a nationwide collaborative of community colleges and universities to study and better understand the current mental health challenges facing students of color and the availability of mental health resources. This includes working with the Community College Equity Assessment Lab at the San Diego State University, and it's known nationwide. And we'll work with them to promulgate the study's findings into actionable strategies. On October the 4th, we all returned to face-to-face classes. They'll fully resume in-person delivery. We've been working in person in many of our workforce programs as a hybrid, but on October the 4th, we're back to in-person. Now, as a learning organization, HCC is committed to applying the lessons learned over the last year and a half to establish a new normal, one that continues to prioritize safety, but also enables operations to return to in-person and dealing with the risk status of the area. We look forward to having everyone on campus again. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Board of Trustees Institute with several of our trustees. Board Chair Hanson and I participated on a panel focused on lessons learned during COVID-19 and what practices colleges will continue to implement post-pandemic. On October the 15th, Doctors Prieta Vandabel-Stalworth and Mudassir Siddiqui will present at the Association of Community College Trustees Conference on engaging community collaboration to enhance programming and industry partnerships. And we all look forward to those sessions. An important part of institutional growth is celebrating the success of our family members and wishing them well as they move on to a new chapter in their careers. It is with that in mind that I announced the departure of Ms. Janet May from Houston Community College. Ms. May has accepted a position as Associate Vice President and Chief Human Resource Officer for the University of Alabama at Birmingham, with over 20,000 employees and the largest employer in Alabama. Her final day with HCC will be on October the 15th. Since August 2013, Janet has been at the center of reimagining HCC and has been instrumental in helping deliver the ultimate student experience and employee experience. Recently, Ms. May was selected to receive the College and University Professional Association for Human Resources 2021 Distinguished Service Award. We wish her well in her future endeavors. Congratulations, Janet. Dr. Frances Viadon Glover will take the helm of Southeast College as its new president on October 1st. Viadon Glover, an educator and administrator with three decades of experience in higher education, comes to HCC from Northern Virginia Community College, where she currently serves as the Vice President of Enrollment Management and Student Success for the multi-college campus. Now, she's not a stranger to Houston or HCC. She previously served at HCC's Associate Vice Chancellor of Special Programs and Student Success, overseeing essential areas in the college system such as Veterans Affairs, international students, counseling, disability services, student conduct, success academies, and the Minority Mail Initiative, in addition to numerous other appointments. We look forward to her return to the HCC family, and it's going to be great to have her back. Want to give the trustees an outlook for October and what's coming. This is a snapshot on the agendas. We'll have an update on the upcoming Saks virtual visit, an update on the trustee newsletters to return to a regular publication of those newsletters, adoption of the 2021 tax rate, and also briefing the board on the bachelor's degree programs that we'll be bringing forward and recommending to the board. At this time, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I want to invite Dr. Antrice Bejy to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report. Dr. Bejy.
Good evening, Board Chairman Hanson, Trustees, and Chancellor Maldonado. It is an honor to speak this evening on behalf of the HCC Faculty Association and specifically as the Faculty Senate President. The Faculty Senate's foundation is based on the institutional practices of shared governance, robust dialogue, the exchange of ideas, and active participation in policy. So the dialogue that I just witnessed gave and gives my heart great joy. I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but I was loving it. So thank you for doing your job. The Senate represents the faculty interest to the administration as well as to the Board of Trustees. We are a deliberative body that comprises 88 senators and representing 21 instructional divisions, which includes the libraries. The body elects a presiding officer, and this year I am that person. So at this, at this moment, I'm going to call to the podium, excuse me, a few, if any, because some people have left, members of the Executive Committee, past presidents, and unfortunately, our adjunct rep has left. So would you all join me, please? While they're walking forward, I'm going to continue. The Senate committees, there are nine standing committees. We have three caucuses. We have an adjunct caucus. We have a past presidents caucus, as well as a chair caucus. When I tell you we are busy, we are busy at the work of making representation and diversity at the forefront for our colleagues. Each year, the Faculty Association hosts four professional development events. Our favorite is the Better Check Orman Foundation, excuse me, the Better Check Orman fundraiser. It's an auction, as you all know, in November. And today, I stand with my colleagues to challenge everybody in this room to support the faculty. Because as much as we want to have student success without us having the funds to help the faculty, we are nowhere. So please, Board, join us and support student success with the Better Check Orman auction. We also have the Faculty Conference. We have the Faculty Only Retreat. And we also have the Faculty Teaching Excellence Awards. So as, I'm going to give a little bit of data. So as of September the 9th, 2021, we had 903 full-time faculty. We have 22 visiting professors and 1,776 adjuncts. That is 2,692 active faculty at this institution. If we include our adjuncts who are on a short work break, that number is 490, excuse me, 482, which brings the total number of 3,174 intelligent, powerhouse, focusly driven faculty. So tonight, we stand here to say we are the best in the city, and we will not allow anybody to question our dedication for our students, for our institution. End quote. So in closing, I want to say, on May the 18th, 1971, the great citizens of Houston, Texas voted to establish Houston Community College as part of a component of Houston Independent School District. This year marks the 50th anniversary of HCC, and we want to commemorate this momentous occasion by recognizing one of our founding mothers, who is not here with us physically, but is always with us in spirit. And that person is Dr. Willie T. Caldwell. Dr. Caldwell began her tenure as an administrative assistant to the first HCC president, Dr. Joseph Over the last five decades, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, Professor Caldwell has received countless accolades, awards, and recognition for her service in the community as well as in higher education. So I'm going to quote Professor Caldwell, as we lovingly call her, Ms. Willie. She says, quote unquote, "Happy professors on the front line will sustain the commitments and strategies of the institution by continuing to meet the individual needs of each student." I'm going to say that again. "Happy professors on the front line will sustain the commitments and strategies of the institution by continuing to meet the individual needs of each student." So on behalf of the HCC Faculty Senate and the larger Faculty Association, we recognize Ms. Willie and all of our colleagues, thanking everyone for their leadership, mentorship, and love for the students of Houston, Texas. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Bejy. Mr. Chair, we'll now invite Mr. Bill Davis, President of the United Student Council, to please step up and deliver his report. Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Mr. Chair, Trustees, Chancellor Maldonado. Respect the faculty and staff, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I'm happy to report, excuse me, the Houston Community College Systems United Student Council Monthly Board of Trustees Report. Today, we, today we will be, we will be speaking upon the following items. USC, the USC Officers for 21, '22, USC Liaison for 2021, USC Goals for Fall 2021. Excuse me. The United Student Council was founded by members of various HCC campuses, campus student government associations, and is comprised of six executive board members, and the voting members are the SGA officers of each campus. Unlike the student government associations that are campus-specific, the United Student Council has advisory jurisdiction on matter of concern regarding all HCC locations. The United Student Council works hand in hand with HCCS district administration, campus administrations, SGA officers at the individual campuses, and of course, our Houston Community College Eagles. I will go through our list of officers for spring, for fall, and Fall '21 and Spring '22. My name is Bill Davis. I am the President of the United Student Council. I represent the Southeast Campus, the Southeast College. I am majoring in Government. The Vice President of the United Student Council, she had to leave early due to class. Her name is Jessica Larga Spada. She is the Vice President. She is representing the Northwest Campus. Her major is Music Business. V. Nguyen is our Secretary. She represents the Central Campus and is majoring in Accounting. Leonard Dunas Gutierrez is the Treasurer for the United Student Council. He represents Northwest Campus and is majoring in Petrolium Technology. Rain Hangbang is the Parliamentarian, and she represents the Northeast Campus. She is majoring in Business Management. Our newest position is the Online Representative, and that Online Representative is Tralicia Charlie Green from the Northeast Campus, and she holds that position. Her major is Business, is a Business major. Our historian position is currently vacant. We are actively recruiting for that position. Our Student Liaison, she's right behind me, her name is Ms. Jana Weiss. She is the Coleman Student Life Coordinator and the current Student Life Team District Liaison for '21. She serves as our advisor for the United Student Council. For, for Slide 6, you, the USC is dedicated to making Houston Community College a system that works to empower and improve the community through the students' perspective. We bring concerns to the administration and Board of Trustees to work in partnership to find solutions. This fall semester, we have two main goals. The first main goal is to disseminate academic and non-academic resource literature to all students at Houston Community College. The second goal is to promote a broader awareness of the United Student Council and the work that, and the work of the student government, of the Student Council's voice. And then our third goal would be to broaden the awareness of this Houston Student, the Houston Community College Student Council. The reason for these, the reason the United Student Council first chose the first goal is because students have a hard time finding information on the different resources HCCS offers. We hope by, that by creating a quick reference guide for students, it will help guide them to the correct location faster. The objective for the second goal is to accomplish, is to accomplish student engagement, to familiarize students with, and to encourage students' involvement in the United Student Council and the Student Life Department. We want students to know they can come to the United Student Council regarding issues and to learn what is happening at HCCS that affects them. We will also be working with the Inclusive Access Department headed by Dr. Parker, the Inclusive Access Coordinator. We would, we are working to get the Inclusive Access Department also by helping, being a helping hand for them, and also to see if we could get inclusive access for all students in all courses. And that ends my slide. Thank you, Ms., thank you again, Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Maldonado. As always, we thank you for your continued support and look forward to working with you and the college administration to improve the students' experience at Houston Community College. Thank you.
Chairman, and Trustees, that concludes my report.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, we'd like to make comments.
You go. I just, first of all, I wanted to thank the Faculty Senate. Excellent, every point you made, and I agree with you. We have the best faculty in Houston and in the state of Texas and in the nation. So yay for Houston Community College. Go Eagles! And for our student, yes, let's give our faculty a, and for our student, United Student Council President, I'm always amazed every time I hear you speak. I'm very proud to be an Eagle and to see that, just the quality of students that come before us and that then go out and sing the praises of Houston Community College because it serves an incredible purpose for our city and for our future. So wow, you make me proud, and congratulations for the great work you do with the council. We appreciate you. And Chancellor, thank you. As an administrator, from one administrator to another, I've always been impressed with how you engage our students through the council, how you engage the faculty through the Senate, and I've just always been impressed with you and and I've just always been impressed with you and how you bring these particular stakeholders that are critical to our system to the table. So thank you for that, sir. You're welcome.
Mr. Chair. If I may. Bill, awesome presentation. Thank you for ascending to leadership. Thank you for what you're doing and how you're working collaboratively with your peers across the campuses, and we're just looking forward to seeing all that you all accomplished with your goals, and it's just such a pleasure to meet you. And so we're here to support your success. To the Faculty Senate, we're fired up and ready to go. I tell you, that was impressive. We are awesome, and we're glad to be a part of such an awesome team. And we just thank you for all that you do, and of course, you can count on us to support you all and your vision and being successful because it's very clear, we can't have successful students without you. So we love you and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to give a shout out to my former fellow professors since I was an adjunct here for a very long time. I am just very excited to see the enthusiasm for the faculty, and I really appreciate all of the work that you did in particular for the African-American Studies and the number of students that were recruited and enrolled in that program. I did not know that the African-American Studies class plus one additional class would suffice for course credit for our two-year degree. I did not know that. And so you educating me made that really, really real to me, and my seniors wanted you to know that they appreciate the efforts of the faculty to include them in the education process. So thank you, faculty. Bill, you should be a professor at HCC. You have done a great job. I appreciate the student government because you all bring to our attention what the needs of the students are, and without you and without students, there would be no need for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that was a great, both of those were great presentations, and makes me proud to be a part of this organization. It's easy for us to sit up here and push buttons and vote and read papers, but we know where the heavy lifting and the hard work takes place. It's on the ground with you guys, and it's the work that the students do to make us the fabulous institution that we are. I heard somewhere, I stole this, so don't think it's mine, I'd love to take credit for it, but that organizations like this are a puzzle. When the board provides the foundation underneath the bottom that you have to build on, the faculty and staff and administration provide the framework with which you have to work, you come in more, and the people who do the work put it there, and then the students are the core in the middle. And without any piece of that, the puzzle falls apart. So we all are a team, and I appreciate being a part of this team, and I want to see what you're gonna do, Mr. Bill, when you leave here.
Okay, is that it? All right. The Chairman's Report, which is going to be brief here. Trustees, we will resume the trustee district reports at the October meeting to include activities in your respective districts and/or throughout the college that you may have attended, an overview from conferences or workshops attended, and/or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. So I'll be pulling your list together and we'll start getting back to telling people the good news about what's going on in our respective areas. We have the following meetings scheduled for October. We have committee meetings on October 6th. As always, the Committee of the Whole will take place at 4:00 PM on October 6th. Then we have a special meeting, i.e. workshop, on Wednesday, October 20th at 2:00 PM, and a regular meeting on Wednesday, October 20th at 4:00 PM. The meetings will be held in person at the HCC Administration Building, 3100 Main, Second Floor Auditorium, i.e. where we are right at the moment. We have several birthday recognitions. At this time, we'd like to pause to express birthday wishes to Dr. Peretta Vanderbilt-Stewart, who celebrated a birthday.
You're looking cute over there, too. I like your hair. I love it.
Her birthday was on Monday, September 6th. And trustee Monica Reichert, who celebrated her birthday on Saturday, September 18th.
Happy Birthday! I didn't know that.
We hope that both of you had wonderful birthday celebrations, and we wish you many more in the future. And lastly, hearing of citizens. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing at least 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office, which is on the 12th floor of 3100 Main. There are, however, no citizens signed up to speak before the Board today, and we thank you for your attention to this. That completes our agenda, guys. This meeting is hereby adjourned at...
6:31 PM.
There you go.